And I call it order to this meeting of the Lincoln County Planning Commission. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. I got thumbs up for being recorded. And the order of events tonight will be as follows. For each public hearing, staff will introduce the agenda item and present a summary of the staff report. The applicant will then be asked to explain their proposal in further detail and answer any questions from the planning commission members. I will then open the floor to public comment, first for persons in support of the application, and then for persons in opposition of the application. When you step up to the podium, please state your name, add your name, your address, and speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers are encouraged to only address new and relevant information pertaining to the item. And above all, please be cordial to all the meeting participants and refrain from side conversations and speaking on our turn, or you will be asked to leave. Lastly, decisions on rezoned applications will be scheduled for public, additional public hearing during upcoming Board of Commissioners meeting. Decision on conditional use permit applications may be appealed to the county board of commissioners by submitting a letter to the county planning zoning office within five days. All right, with all that said, we will do roll call. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Enstead.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Jungling's also here. All right, approval of the meeting minutes. Are there any changes for the minutes, Mr. Brown?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
All right, with that, I ask for motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes. Scott.
Second, Green.
All right, motion is second. Any discussion? How do you roll call for approval? Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Enstead.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Jungling's also a yes. All right, those are approved. Now we go to approval of the meeting agenda. Um, any changes on the agenda, Mr. Brown?
Uh, no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you much. Um, motion is second.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve the meeting agenda.
Second, Enstead.
All right, we have motion and second. Any discussion? All right, I do roll call. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Enstead.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Jungling's also a yes. All right, at this time, I will ask for public input on any, on anything you'd like to speak that's not on the agenda tonight. So any concerns or anything you'd like to address to the board that is not on the agenda tonight, please feel free to come up and talk to us. All right, see you none. I'll close the floor. And, uh, any old business, Mr. Brown?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, public hearings, application number one.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Uh, this first item is an application to rezone from the C Commercial District to the PD Plan Development District. Uh, the applicant and property owner is LG Everest. Uh, location of this property is approximately a little over a mile to the southwest of the city of Harrisburg. Um, as you can see, this property is within the city of T's, um, Plating jurisdiction, but they have deferred that to the city of Harrisburg. There is no subdividing of this property taking place with this application, so there is no preliminary subdivision plan associated with it. Uh, subject parcel is approximately 127 acres in size. Um, as you can see, the property is currently zoned, uh, C Commercial. That was rezoned to C Commercial over two separate phases. Um, there is, uh, as far as the property is unimproved, is primarily used for agricultural purposes. Uh, I should say it's not completely, or there is a house that is on the property, and I believe that's in the process of being removed, um, as well as some outbuildings around the property as are shown here. Um, these were some shots were taken of the property. Uh, the first one off to the left, that's showing to the north, that would be on the property looking directly to the north. Uh, purpose of this application, the applicant, uh, identified the property, uh, so Plan Development, they've identified two sub-areas for the property. Uh, the first sub-area would be primarily to the south of the property, and I'll show those pictures here in a second. Um, but essentially, it would be locations for a, a wet and dry ready-mix concrete plants. Um, the other sub-area that, which would be kind of majority of the property, uh, which would be to the north along the frontage, uh, that, that sub-area would be primarily commercial, I'll say some light industrial type uses on there. Most of sub-area B, A would be undeveloped until city services would be primarily available to that property. Again, those services would be more than likely provided by the city of Harrisburg at some, at some stage in time. Uh, the only thing that's been proposed at this time again would be the development of the property directly to the south. Um, that would be where the wet and, uh, dry ready-mix concrete plants as well, I believe is an asphalt, uh, plant would be there as well, and then associated type uses there. Uh, so staff did, uh, identifying the staff report that this application identify, there's proposed in the area that's identified as a future rural commercial area. Uh, so this application is consistent with that proposed land use that is there. Uh, staff did work with the applicant and draft a proposed ordinance. Uh, the proposed ordinance would identify all of those uses that would be developed, uh, potentially in sub-area A and sub-area B. Um, if we recall, early this, early this year, we did rezon property to Plan Development just across the road to the north. Um, that was, that property is owned by LG Everest as well. Uh, just before that, that, that ordinance became effective, uh, LG Everest purchased the property, the subject property of the south, identified that this would be a better location for their proposed expansion and future uses. Um, and so, skin, staff identified these different types of uses. Most of these are pretty similar to what was approved to the north that is there. Um, some other, um, issues that arose is that, uh, did contact the township. Um, the applicant did work with the township, um, and I believe they've formalized, um, the last I'd heard, an agreement, uh, with the township for, uh, road maintenance and access, um, onto the township road, and that would be La Valley Township Road. So be this section of the township road right here. This would be the primary access for the, for the initial development, would go up the township road and then access onto the county highway 110 to the north. Um, so again, uh, staff did review the application and found that the application is consistent with, uh, the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations. And so staff does recommend the ordinance, um, but if you have any additional comments or questions with that ordinance, or through the public hearing process, we could certainly revisit that at that time. With that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, a, uh, Mr. Brown, is there, is there any access to this land off the county highway?
Uh, yes, there, there'd be the existing, what I'll, what I'll call probably the, um, the home access or the, yeah.
So is the, is the majority of the access going to come off the township road then?
I believe for that first sub-area, yes.
Okay. And you, you mentioned that they have a, an agreement with La Valley Township. Do you have, do you know more details on that, or is that a for sure deal?
Yeah, I defer that to the applicant, but I have seen, I have seen the agreement.
All right, commissioners, any additional questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just apologies, we just got a little plumbing issue on the other side dealing with, so. For Mike Turdias.
All right, with that, I will ask the applicant or the representative to come forward and talk about the, uh, their application.
Thank you. Uh, Guard Rops with Stockwell Engineers, 801 North Phillips Avenue, uh, Suite 100 in Sioux Falls, South Dakota 57104. Uh, as Toby had mentioned, uh, we were here a couple months ago or so going over, uh, looking at doing a PUD on their LG's existing site at the Ace Ready-Mix Plant just north of 273rd, um, at the corner of I-29 and 273rd, they purchased the north two properties adjacent to that property, uh, which totaled about 13 and a half acres or so. Um, as part of that, uh, there were some kind of restrictions that they had, uh, to that site and in conjunction with the DOT doing their systems interchange at 273rd, cutting off, um, the Ironworks, uh, street connection there, shifting that over to Kenworth. Uh, with that, they, uh, saw some issues with turning races and that kind of thing, queuing and stacking, so, um, decided to, uh, as part of that process, when we were originally here, we did an open house to the, um, for the adjacent properties, uh, to the east there, the development really essentially, the commercial and, uh, industrial development there. As part of that open house, it was, found out that the property to the south, uh, was available for purchase, and based on the, the issues that they had with the existing site and potential expanding in there, decided it was in the best interest of LG to purchase that property and then, uh, expand, uh, operations into that site. So, uh, I guess what, Toby explained it pretty good. Um, there's going to be two separate, uh, is that up here, Toby, at all, or?
Keep talking.
Okay. With those sub-areas, A and B, um, we're going to be concentrating on sub-area B, uh, which is in the blue, that area. There we go, perfect. As mentioned, sub-area A will be future development, uh, mainly commercial industrial use, uh, here in the future, once we get, um, some utilities extended out here, uh, to service that. Um, but the overall, you can kind of see in here, the entire site, uh, with, uh, what's hatched in gray down at the bottom here, this is a schematic, uh, site plan, uh, currently right now for, uh, for the new concrete and asphalt plant sites. And, um, they will have two, uh, access points onto 471st Street, the one being right here at Fairfield Place right now, is a current, uh, existing intersection. And then down to the south, uh, there'd be an exit into the site, uh, that was shifted all the way further south to that quarter section line, which eventually in the future, um, there, there will be a street, uh, extending out to the east. Currently, right now, there's an existing driveway that you can see right here, uh, but in the future, that should be, uh, with future expansion to the east, there, uh, will be a street, uh, going along that quarter section line. So, uh, try to line up the two approaches as best we can with the existing intersections and the future intersection, I guess, on 471st Street. The concrete plant is going to be located right here. That is something that they'll be concentrating on constructing immediately here in the near future. That will be a completely enclosed, uh, wet and dry batch plant that will be located right here with the conveyor that connects to the hoppers down here. The hoppers also will be completely enclosed. In the red, you can see the aggregate bins, that's, uh, the aggregate bins that will be used to feed the hoppers to that, to the concrete plant. All of the surfacing around that, you can see in this light gray, is denoted as concrete pavement, so that'll be all hard surfaced around that concrete plant. With the concrete washout area just located to the, uh, to the west of that, that's where all the, the new, the concrete trucks will come in and wash out at the end of the day. As part of this plan in the future, right after following the construction of this concrete plant, concentration will be going on to the office shop building right here, which is kind of centrally located in between the two exits, but on the east end of the site, that will house offices, dispatch, maintenance, uh, and the testing laboratory, uh, for operations out here. The parking, uh, for staff and employees is located right adjacent to that. That will be, um, asphalt surfacing. Parking for the trucks for the concrete and asphalt plants will be on the far east side right here, that will also be asphalt surfacing. Everything else, uh, will end up being concrete surfacing. It does show some asphalt right here, but that will end up being concrete as well. That's been modified since, uh, this plan was put together. Following the office, uh, construction though, then move forward with the asphalt plant, which is kind of located right here, the layout of that generally is right here, with the aggregate bins, again, hatched in red right adjacent to that to help feed, uh, the plant. There'll be a raised road along the backside of those aggregate bins where supply trucks, aggregate delivery trucks will come in, dump on that road, and then loaders will, they'll push that off into the bin, into the, uh, each individual bin depending on the aggregate that's coming in. To the very far, uh, west end, uh, right over here, you can kind of see this hatched area, that's, that will be gravel. Uh, at this point, there'll be, uh, the crusher, uh, for recycled concrete and recycled asphalt in this location. Recycled asphalt will be utilized to feed the asphalt plant, uh, with the 20% wrap in their new mix. Obviously, the crush recycled concrete will be utilized in any, um, aggregate base used on any infrastructure project around, around this area. So, that's something that's not going to be crushed on a daily basis, that's just on an as-dated basis, uh, when material becomes available, and those will be utilized. Um, down to the south here, uh, you can see kind of in the blue area, there will have a, we have a number of, it's, it's labeled as detention ponds, but those will be retention ponds. Pretty much all of the storm sewer on-site will be internally collected and held on-site, uh, and then that water utilized, uh, through wellhouse and pumps, uh, to pump this raw, this gray water throughout the site and used for various reasons, uh, ones to feed the concrete plant, um, to wash down any areas that they need to wash down, dust control, washing down any, um, aggregate plant, uh, piles and, and so forth. So, they're, be utilizing as much of the existing storm water as they can on-site, um, to, uh, to feed, uh, this plant, well, both plants and pretty much the entire operations on this property here. There will be berms, landscaped berms along the west side, along I-29, along the north side, and the future development to the north, and along the east side along 471st, similar to what they have out there now, uh, looking at six to 10 feet, uh, tall berms, it'll be landscaped, uh, to kind of help shield, uh, the, the plant itself from the public. The, I'll just go up here to the utilities for the site. Um, like I said, they're going to be utilizing as much of the storm water on-site as they can, however, Lincoln Row Water has an existing line adjacent to 741st Street there, that they'll tap off, provide a meter, and then that will come in and feed the office building and the asphalt plant, uh, but the larger line will end up feeding the concrete plant that will supplement the well water, uh, to that plant when the well water isn't, uh, isn't or can't keep up. Uh, sanitary sewer for the concrete plant, for the asphalt plant, and the office building will be collected and go through a septic tank, and then obviously pumped out there from, um, every so often when it needs to. Um, that will then gravity feed after that's been siphoned down to a lift station and then pumped through, uh, to a pressurized leach field that will be located down in this green space area down here. So that'll be kind of a mound system, will be pressurized, um, to, to discharge any of the water off of the, uh, off of the septic tank. So everything will be septic, there'll be a holding tank for everything out here on-site. And as far as sanitary sewer is concerned, there will be a stub out right here, that stub's out towards 471st Street. So in the future, when that sanitary sewer comes online out there, they can connect directly to that, and then the lift station and the leach field just taken offline at that time. Storm sewer is running throughout the site, uh, just to kind of facilitate drainage throughout the site. It's a very flat area, we're raising the, the site up to help with that drainage. Um, that storm sewer will also extend through to the north and through that north berm to help facilitate drainage just to the north here when that further gets, uh, developed. Also, whatever drainage storm water that comes through there will also again be, uh, contained on-site and through these, uh, kind of, uh, three or four ponds that we're going to have interconnected down-site. Ultimately, there'll be one pond down here in the bottom left corner, that's where the, we'll be drawing from for the storm water to, to service the facility with the raw water. There is a, at that, off that exit, there is a scale down here at that exit location that will be utilized obviously for scaling going out of the plant as well. There'll be interior lighting, uh, just for security purposes overnight. Um, obviously during, during the evenings when that security lighting's on, that will be shielded as needed to limit the amount of, uh, light pollution obviously onto adjacent landowners to the, uh, to the east and the interstate to the west. Here, you can kind of see the existing drainage of the entire, uh, quarter section that was purchased. Basin D is located down here on the left, F in the center, G and F, uh, located down here in the south half. So all of these basins, D, E, F, and G will be self-contained. Currently, they discharge, uh, down mainly through the bottom, uh, drainage swale that comes around down to the south portion of the site, there is another discharge point crossing 471st Street where basin F comes into and drains out. That will be all, uh, included inside the berms, all that drainage will be collected and, and discharged into the existing retention ponds on-site. There will be a little bit on the outside of the ponds or outside of the berms that will still drain off, but it'll just be grass area currently like it is today. So, I know that drainage is definitely an issue down in this area, so we're doing our best to, to help that situation, but then utilize it as best we can too. So it's a, it's kind of a win-win situation. So I guess that's kind of an overview of everything that they're planning on there, if you have any questions with that.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, I got a couple. When you talked about the crushing of the concrete, are they going to have a crusher on-site, are they going to have a contractor come in and do that? So I just know it was brought up last time was concerns with the citizens with them grinding it and the silica and all that stuff, and you know, it being with close proximity to the interstate is, kind of try the winds blowing, it could blow that onto the road and cause visibility problems, so that's just kind of been a concern of mine.
Yeah, that was, one of the issues with the other site was, we had that in there as part of the, one of the uses for that PUD, however, the site wasn't really conducive to have a crusher on, they just didn't have the room to do that. This one, I believe Lance will have full-time crushers out available on-site as needed, or not. They'll be brought in as needed. And there, he can talk a little bit more about those.
Good evening, uh, my name is Lance Pullman, uh, my address is 350 South Main, uh, in Sioux Falls. Uh, as far as the crushing goes, uh, it, it'll be done internally. We have our own crushers, um, and, uh, they are plum for water, dust mitigation. The other thing with, with crushing is it, it's, it's not, as Guard had said, it's not a, um, routine or a, you know, a, a continuous operation. Uh, so as needed, you know, a couple times a year, uh, we would be doing crushing. And, 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 uh, it would be, uh, internal, so.
And maybe my next question would be is, due to the proximity to the airport and with the height of the silos and the, the plants and that kind of stuff, how does that impact or have any impact on the airport of, you guys looked into that?
Yes, we, uh, went through the FAA, uh, the tallest part of this building will be the concrete plant itself, uh, similar to the one that's out there right now, and that's gone through the FAA review and approved, uh, as far as the location of where that is on-site, so we should be good.
And then going back to the county, do they realize, you know, on that 271st there, of how many trucks are going to be coming and going out of there every day, you know, because you got your, your trucks coming, your aggregate trucks, your powder trucks, all those coming and going out of there, so it's going to beat that road up pretty good.
Yes, that was part of the road agreement that LG has now signed with, uh, the La Valley Township. Um, La Valley will be doing their regular maintenance that they typically do on their roads, uh, grading, um, mag, uh, dust control, whatever that they typically do throughout the year, but, uh, LG will be doing, going above and beyond that anytime to fix any, any areas obviously that, uh, that gets damaged throughout that and replace those, uh, and reconstruct those areas so that, uh, obviously that road needs to be, uh, in good condition for them to maintain operations, so they're going to keep it up as best as they, best they can.
And to, and to address your traffic question, part of our road use agreement with the township was that we agreed to do a traffic study. Uh, so our intentions are to do a traffic study pre, pre any development in this area, so basically now, uh, we're working on that. Um, and then we will do another traffic study as a follow-up to see what the impacts are, what improvements, uh, the, as you know, the whole corridor is looking through this, you know, with the, the interchange development, uh, you know, all the traffic from the north, uh, our traffic, um, you know, there, there, there's some decisions that need to be made, and, and hence, uh, we, we worked it out with the township, you know, to be proactive, let's, let's see how this is going to be affected and, and, uh, and, and what, what kind of measures we can take, so.
I just know from living in that area and driving that overpasses, you know, that overpass can be challenging at times when you got vehicles passing, you know, each direction, so you know, with it, with that added truck traffic going on there, that might make that a little bit more dangerous.
Well, and as far as added truck traffic, the truck traffic, you know, the majority of it's there already with our existing facility. Uh, the, the only difference is this will just push further. Will there be additional trucks? Yes, there is going to be an increase, but, uh, uh, you know, the same aggregate trucks, the same concrete trucks are currently running now, so. I, I agree, it's, it's a, it's a complicated corridor and, and, uh, you know, w- we want to be proactive and, and work with everybody on it.
I think there's some site distances issues with that overpasses as well, that they'll rectify when that project obviously goes here in 27, 28, whenever that's planned to
So, so you mentioned the, the agreement you have with La Valley Township, can you just elaborate on that a little bit, on, on what that looks like?
Well, it turned out to be quite a few pages. Um, so basically what, um, what we did is, uh, kind of did a conditional survey, see what the existing conditions of the roads are. Um, and then we had several meetings with, um, uh, well, mo- most of the township, uh, to kind of hash things out, here's, here's what we want, so, uh, and then here's what they wanted. So as far as basically some of the agreements, and I won't belabor it, and, and, uh, more, more or less that, um, the user, us LG Everest, shall use the roadway in existing condition, um, and, and improvements are, you know, prior to, to construction will help with maintenance, but that's, that, that was one of them. But that's, that, that was one of them. Um, and then that will, will obey, control and mitigate any da- damage generated as a result of the use of the roadway. The user shall be responsible for roadway damages and excess maintenance, uh, and excess maintenance resulting from such use. Uh, and then there were some examples of typical road damage as far as, uh, rutting and that kind of stuff. Uh, we've agreed to do, uh, appropriate dust mitigation as warranted. And then the agreement applies not only to our trucks and traffic, but all our contractors, service vehicles, uh, vendors. Uh, you know, if, if one of them ruts up the road, we'll, we'll take care of it that way. And then we also have a provision for any future development in the area when, uh, when that deemed necessary as far as other utilities, sewer, uh, public utilities coming in, uh, that that warrants, uh, a kind of a reassessment at that time. And then as far as, uh, basically we, we both agreed to, um, more or less meet regularly, if you will, uh, at least annually, if not more often, uh, and, and, uh, to discuss and, and work together. I mean, we're, we don't expect to just come in blindly and, and use the road, um, without, without helping. And, um, and as I mentioned, the traffic study, um, we'll do initial to create a baseline and then we agree to further, conduct further traffic studies as activities increase, as our activities increase. And, uh, basically I guess we did kind of put a time limit of, of five years on this. You know, we don't know really know what's, what the future holds. Um, and, uh, so i- in short, we more or less have agreed to maintain that half mile corridor and it, to make it short and sweet. Uh, and, and, uh, in fact, this week, um, we have agreed to, the township is doing a road stabilization project in, in the area and, uh, we agreed to pay for that half mile, um, uh, to the tune of about fourteen thousand dollars. It benefits them, but it also benefits us. So to, to, in my viewpoint, that's a good faith effort to show that we're going to stand by and our word.
Yeah, that's a good thing. The, the road stabilization thing, um, I'm aware of that. And that's, that's good that you guys are doing that on that, on that stretch of road. And it's also my understanding, they have a driveway permitting process, which I'm, I assume that you guys have filled that out and have been approved on, on these two driveways anyhow through the township. It's probably part of your agreement.
I guess I'm not aware of that. And they never said anything, but we'll certainly work.
But you've got, you got all three supervisors signed off on, on this road maintenance agreement?
Darren, Doug and Galen all signed off.
Perfect.
All right. Other twis- other questions for the applicant commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Robson, I apologize to everybody if this was discussed prior to my arrival. The, uh, we see where the base plant and, and that activities will be. As far as the remaining acres, what is the plan for that?
To the north?
Yeah, to the north and I believe to the west.
To north and west, right?
Because you're requesting for the whole parcel.
Yeah, so the whole parcel will be a PUD.
Yep.
Um, and then the two subareas broken out with the different, um, items in the PUD, the uses of the PUD. Subarea A will basically list everything in commercial and industrial that's already approved on the.
Do you have a plan? I know, I understand what is allowed in the plan development. Do you have anything in development at this point that clarifies to us, this board, as to what you're hoping to do in there?
Uh, not at this time. No, not at this time.
Okay.
We have a, a plan that kind of was, that we have discussed internally on what they plan on doing, but, um, nothing is set in stone. They don't, they have no idea how this is going to actually develop here in the future.
Plan developments are a wonderful tool. I think when it's clear as to how the property is going to get used and exactly what you're planning for the cement plant and the asphalt plant, uh, great use where it gets you in and, and allows you to operate within those acres. I get a little concerned about those acres that we aren't clear as to what's going to happen.
Yep.
Um, so would there be any consideration to subdivide out those for the plan development at all if there wasn't a support for it by chance? Just because of the, it takes it out of the control of this plan and, and our staff. Um, it's kind of a approval, the list of approval items gets very large, um, in the plan development. So once it's, when it is gone over to that, normally there would be a kind of a in, initial idea of what's going to be used in that area. Um, but, uh, there's nothing at this point. So.
Yeah, I think that's something we could certainly talk about and discuss.
And I'm not proposing, I'm just curious, given that I don't see in front of us or heard any correspondence on that. So.
If, and yeah, we have an idea of kind of what that, obviously by laying this out, we had to come up with some sort of forward-thinking plan to that. So, yeah, we could definitely.
But at this time, there's nothing. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? My one question, uh, kind of two, but I see there's wetlands on your original. Now they're going retention ponds. Is that where the wetlands getting mitigated through the process and turn into retention ponds?
Um, we are doing, we're doing everything we can as far as grading, you know, the site right here to minimize the impacts to the wetlands that are down there. So this large area down here in this corner, we're staying out of completely. This area down in here, we're trying to avoid as much as we possibly can. We are catching these little fingers that come up into here. And this has changed a little bit since this was initially developed. Um, this was kind of the initial take on it back in the fall. Um, but since then, spring, they've gone out and done a more thorough investigation on that. And these fingers are kind of like this over here. This one's completely gone. And I think this one up here is gone and these have shrunk a little bit. Um, but we're trying to avoid those as much as possible with the grading to not, uh, have to mitigate as many of them as we possibly can. The, the, the areas that we will get into an impact, uh, the plan is to bank those, those wetland credits on that. So. So it'll, the, the ponds out there will be in conjunction with the wetlands. So the wetlands will stay and the, the ponds will be there as well.
And then, uh, I know you're talking about connecting to the future of Harrisburg was septic and sewer and all that. Have you had those conversations with Harrisburg?
They want to get sewer out here as much, as soon as they possibly can. Yes. Um, that's still down the road, obviously a ways yet, but, um, they're, they're definitely looking forward to the interchange getting redone. Uh, and then ultimately in the future here getting, uh, utility and water out here as well. There's sewer and water out here as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Uh, Robs, can you put on the record as to whether or not the property is willing and has agreed to once the municipality has gotten to the property, they'll allow annexation of the property?
Sure.
All right, commissioners, any additional questions? See you none. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. At this time, I will ask anybody in favor of the application, come forward and speak. All right. Anybody in opposition of the application? See you none. I'll close the floor to public input and then I'll ask for a motion so we can discuss further as a commission.
I'll offer a motion to approve the rezone.
And second instead.
All right, motion second. Um, discussion.
My concerns, I think, will be allevi- alleviated given the municipality has, um, by statements made that they're planning on going out to that property to provide water and sewer. Um, my concerns are the areas that are not identified. I think by the time that develops, municipality would be out there. So I'd favor that, uh, for this rezone, for those reasons. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
All right. Yeah, my, my thing I have to say, my concern is just it is a large area to be rezoned all at once. But also I know the, uh, reputation of the company and all that. And I know they, they, they're, they're a good business partner. They're a good neighbor. That's what I've had from my past experience. So I'll be voting in favor.
Any other discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. What, um, the purpose for making it a planned development, um, is the concrete and asphalt plant not able to operate in the way it's zoned currently?
I would ask Mr. Brown for that, but I don't believe so.
Uh, correct. The, that would be a I two type of a use. And so again, this would be a mix of uses with the commercial and that. So it's best at a P, plan development district.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? If not, I will do roll call. All right. And this is to approve, approve the rezone. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jungling is also a yes. All right. Congratulations. Item number two.
Uh, the second item is an application rezone some property from the C Commercial District to the Iowa Light Industrial District. Um, the applicant and property owner is Avery Zahn. Um, as you can see, this property is located um, just off of US Highway eighteen. This would be on the west, I'll say the southwest quadrant of Interstate twenty nine. Um, subject property is currently zone C Commercial. Uh, parcel size is approximately four point six nine acres in size. The property is currently developed with various miscellaneous buildings is the best I'd call them, warehouse-type structures. Um, there has been, uh, uses permitted through conditional use permits over the years for primarily vehicle sales, motor vehicle repairs and those different types of things. Uh, so the applicant has submitted an application to change the zone of this parcel from the C Commercial District to the Iowa Light Industrial District. The Iowa Light Industrial District primarily because the applicant is proposing to do light manufacturing. Um, my concept plan was not submitted with the application as far as a drawing, but, uh, staff has had communication with the applicant and, uh, his representatives and identify that really what he's proposing and he'll go into further detail with it. But essentially it's a recycling type operation where they'll take recyclables and convert those to what I'll call end-user type products. And I'll let him go into more detail what that is. Um, in the staff report, staff did, uh, identify that this property is identified as a rural, commercial, industrial area. Um, and so this application is consistent, uh, with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Uh, one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What he's proposing then, once it is rezoned, is that a permitted use or still requires a condition use permit?
It will require a conditional use permit.
Thank you for the record.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and speak about their application.
Avery Zahn, two eight zero five four, four hundred and seventy second avenue, Worthing, South Dakota.
All right. Yeah, can you tell us a little bit?
Yeah, so I brought some samples with you guys. It's kind of odd. You don't know if the best way is just to show you what we actually do. But, uh, we take literally trash and plastic and we convert it into end-user products like Toby said. The samples you see in front of you is a four-inch, uh, post that we use for agricultural use. So it replaced your typical wood green tree post. So we'll do like, uh, agricultural fence posts. We'll do picking tables, park benches, speed bumps, uh, air conditioner pads, uh, bumper stops. Anything that, uh, we can use, that we can mold into, uh, uh, end lifetime product or forever lifetime product with plastic is willing to try. We've been doing R and D on this, this project for the last three years. The last year, we've been pretty serious on coming up with our formulations and figuring out our formulations on the product. And now we're ready to hit production. So now this is our first time we've made a public announcement on it. And, uh, we didn't work with Toby on it. So we still have some proprietary rights and how we do it and our formulations and stuff like that. But, uh, we're willing to answer any questions thus far so we can proceed forth with the process of the rezone.
Thank you. That's, that's exciting. Uh, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, so Avery, currently you guys aren't in production.
No.
Anywhere else. Okay.
No, currently right now, this technology has been utilized in Canada and New Zealand. There's nothing in the United States like this technology. So we're bringing the technology over from New Zealand and the United States. It's what we're doing. So there's a lot of proprietary rights. We've been doing a lot of R and D out of the existing facility, but we're not in production right now. But we can be in a matter, like I was discussing with Toby, within a matter of a month or two, we'll be in full production. So.
So where do you get your materials from?
Right now, we're, uh, working with the, uh, city of Omaha.
Okay.
Because we didn't want it too local, because we didn't want to know, you know, or let people know what was really going on in the area. Uh, we've been dealing with the city of Omaha. We, uh, we have some NDAs at the city of Sioux Falls. We're dealing with the city of Sioux Falls, city of Rapid City, Fargo, Bismarck. And, uh, we're reaching out to the larger municipalities, especially the city of Sioux Falls, because it's so local, that we're working with relationships with them to acquire the raw material, either out of the landfill or at their recycling facilities.
So is this, is this building big enough to hold the?
No.
So how, how are you gonna, when you get this, this material delivered before you can make it into your final project? How's that going to be stored?
Yeah, so, uh, our next proposal that we'll have is we'll do a building permit, which I think we applied for a building permit with, with Toby already. Um, well, we want everything stored indoors. So to ease to the existing structure, the large structure, we want to propose to have a larger building to acquire the material. Right now, currently we're taking the material, uh, at the city, at their, their landfills and stuff like that. And it's being mobily shredded down to where we can do our R and D inside the, the existing facility. So to answer your question, if we were to do a recycling location, that's our ultimate goal is to have a location here at this facility. So the locals, farmers could bring their chem jugs, uh, to our facility. Um, any, um, any type of plastic could be brought to this facility and we could grind it onsite at the facility and use it in our, our shop. So.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like us to try to just focus on the rezone at this point versus kind of go through the condition use permit.
Sure.
Process that it'll have to go through later. Um, just the one use though, though you're looking for this property.
Correct. Yep. And I was, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you anticipate this property to be large enough for when you are into production?
Uh, no, this is just be our, our hometown. I'm a hometown Worthing guy, you know, and, uh, I've owned this property. And, uh, we just want this to be our home base. We plan on scaling out from here. Uh, whether it's in Sioux Falls, whether it's, you know, someplace in the county or in different cities or in different areas or different states. But this will just be our home area right now.
And then with the rezone, with the additional manufacturing, you'll have additional resources you'll need as far as sewer, power and all that. Have you?
Sure. We've, we've already done the one call with, uh, DNR. So we've, we've spoken with everyone at the DNR that we need to speak with as far as the water, the wastewater, the air quality. All of that has been handled with the DNR. So we've already done through that process.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any additional questions? All right. Thank you much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. This time I'll ask anybody in favor of the application, application, come forward and speak. All right. Anybody in opposition of the application, come forward and speak. See you none. I'll close the floor to public input and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman also moved to accept the rezone. Um, feel that it fits in the comprehensive plan and that's exactly where, uh, we want these types of zones. And so that's why I'll be in favor of it.
All right, motion a second. Um, additional conversation? No, I'm, I'm in for, I'm in favor of any sustainability, uh, stuff, especially in our county and, and at home. So. All right, uh, we'll do roll call. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jungling is also a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We're looking at application number three.
Okay, this, uh, third item is an application for a conditional use to allow firework sales temporarily. Um, the applicant and property owner is Kevin Wheeler. Uh, location is approximately half a mile. Uh, location is approximately half a mile south, uh, be half a mile southwest of the city of T or southeast, sorry. Um, subject property is zone A one agricultural. Um, this is the Tower Estates subdivision. Uh, we've been familiar with this area. We've had a number of applications in this area for rezones to commercial. Again, subject property is zoned uh, A one agricultural. Uh, there is commercial property to the north. There is our, our rural residential property to the far west and east sides. And again, those properties rezone to allow um, to allow uh, single family dwellings on them because those properties did not have the ability to build uh, single family dwellings on them. Uh, property is improved with a single family dwelling and an outbuilding on the property. Uh, the property is primarily accessed along an unimproved road, which is Terry Lane, which is just directly to the south. Uh, this property also does have a hi- uh, has a, uh, an access point uh, to the county highway. Um, that is just directly adjacent to the north side of it, as you can see in the picture here. Um, these are some screenshots of the picture there. Uh, this was the, the site plan that was submitted with the application and discussions with the applicant. He intends to conduct the firework sales and the outbuilding that is on the property. It'd be fully enclosed um, type of facility. Uh, staff did review this application in the staff report. Uh, we did identify that again, uh, this use is a conditional use in the A one agricultural district. Um, again, the use uh, does not have any standards associated with it within the Lincoln County regulations or the zoning ordinance. Uh, this use is primarily regulated through the state of South Dakota. Um, state of South Dakota does have some inspection requirements as well as some operation requirements that the applicant and licensing and, and those different types of things that the applicant will have to con- conform with. Uh, we do have concerns though, again, that uh, use of, uh, nature of fireworks is dangerous in itself uh, to nearby or does carry some risk to nearby properties. Um, this, the comprehensive plan identifies this area as a future urban expansion area. Again, the county has, has received applications to rezone uh, adjacent property to commercial. Uh, those applications, as you recall, were, were denied um, primarily because of the, what I'll call the residential aspects of this area. Um, but staff uh, does feel that the application again is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. And if approved, does recommend the seven conditions that are included in the staff report. Uh, with that, we'd have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioners, questions for staff?
So I do, so, so when you say temporary, um, is this, I understand the nine days per calendar year, but is this for as long as they own the property for nine days per calendar year, they can sell fireworks?
Correct. So temporarily, not long term, but temporary on a yearly basis. Correct. I know, I've had discussions with the applicant. Uh, as you recall, the state law did change. It seems like yesterday, but it couldn't have been years ago, but they do allow additional sales in the state of South Dakota, more than just nine days for local sales. But our zoning ordinance is restrictive when the agricultural district, if, if, if an applicant did wanna conduct sales greater than the nine days, they would have to rezone to a commercial district to do that. That's just allowable in the agricultural district.
Toby, is there anything in the ordinance that says how far that that needs to be away from any residential dwellings?
Not in the county ordinance, no.
Anything in the state law or anything that? Okay.
Yeah. I'll defer to the applicant on the state statute stuff, but yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'll ask the applicant come forward and, and speak.
All right. Kevin Wheeler, four seven zero two two, Terry Lane, T, South Dakota. Um, as Toby mentioned, I'm trying to apply for, I guess, the key takeaway is a temporary. It's a nine day. Um, the state allows, which I did bring the license just to show you, the state's actually given it to me the last like four years. Um, this started as a terrible hobby and is now turning into more of something. I guess I wanna see if it turns into a legitimate business. I guess uh, the plan would be to expand it and move to, you know, a permanent commercial location, but uh, right now, just to learn the ins and outs of the market. Um, I mean, I have the shop. I use it for cars and playing on toys like that, but um, this is just kinda fitting in with some of the other seasonal businesses. There used to be a barn on South Cliff that sold fireworks, the same thing. Nine days out of the year, the state allows you to sell them um, June twenty-seventh through July fifth. Um, you can apply for a wholesaler license and sell outside those periods. I have no intention of doing that. Um, I've talked to the neighbors. Um, basically, I've started putting on an annual fireworks display and they all love it and it's kinda become a thing. Um, so this is just kinda fitting with that. Um, I've also starting the application process with the ATF um, to purchase larger fireworks for more professional displays, but that will not be at this location. Um, the fireworks at this location are one point four G consumer fireworks. So as far as storage and things like that, they don't really consider them as much of a hazard because they don't have too much dangerous black powder in them, I guess. Um, as far as the state, uh, there's no discharging fireworks within three hundred feet, no smoking within fifty. Um, I have to have signs displaying that, fire extinguisher, things like that. The state fire marshal can make random inspections. And then I keep a log of all the goods I've purchased from wholesale just to prove that they're all one point four consumer fireworks. So there's no illegal items, I guess, like that, but um, yeah, the plan is just to do a seasonal fireworks stand, something the wife and kids and I can kinda do. Little extra income and support, I guess, a bad habit. I saw the quick math this year. They're expecting two point three billion dollars with a B in fireworks sales. There was just shy of two billion last year in the U S, so pretty crazy what we burn.
Yeah, I agree.
But it is neat. I guess people have other vices. I blow stuff up, so.
Commissioners, additional questions with the, for the applicant?
I've heard of a lot of requests um, and habits that get into growing into things. Some of the concerns that I have is the length of period of time that this would stay with the property.
Sure.
It's not a temporary as in length of years of time. It's a temporary only in days of the year. And we hope that it grows uh, very well, very quickly for you. Um, what is your plan as far as uh, operation if it does go well, which I think it will, because people do like to shoot things off, especially in this state.
Yep.
Um, and take them to other states and, and take them to the, one of the issues that I do have and I wish the state would address it is users that purchase fireworks, take them out to a country road and then leave the discharge. Not a fan of that.
Right.
I've dealt with it all my life. I'm point blank, everyone on the record tired of it.
Yep.
I love it when people do it at their own home. Uh, I commend the municipality of T. Uh, they allow their uh, residents to shoot there. Sioux Falls does not. Sioux Falls has two hundred and some thousand people in it. They come out into our country and Lincoln County and shoot them.
Yep.
Um, and I can show you pictures over the years of piles and piles and piles of them. Okay, that's my little rant on that. It has nothing to do with your application. What does have to do with your application? Parking. Um, how do you hand, how will you be handling that? There's no hard surfacing road. There's no hard surface on your, a lot. Um.
Correct. I have just the large gravel driveway and road off the highway there. Um, I intend to use that for parking. Um, I don't foresee me getting the hundreds of customers. Um, this is kind of a word of mouth friends and family type deal. Um, obviously, I'm hoping for more retail sales. That's what everybody's shooting for. Um, I guess, like I said, this is a feeler thing. I'm totally willing and listening to the neighbors on this. Obviously, I don't want people driving through yards, tearing things up that way, um, and becoming a nuisance. Um, you know, I've reached out to all the neighbors. They were all excited about it and willing for it. Um, and I don't think, yeah, as mentioned, Toby didn't get any complaints, I guess. Um, you know, and as he stated too, we're pretty tight knit out there. So if somebody didn't like him for sure, they would have mentioned it or got ahold of me. I've only heard positive comments from the neighbors at this point. But um, like I said, I'm, I'm planning to park people in front of my shop there in my driveway. Um, and move them in and out as quick as I can, I guess. It's.
The one thing I, I would say that I would add a condition that this has a sunset. I don't know if it's one year or five years or two years.
Okay.
But there, in my mind, there should be a sunset on this.
Yep.
Uh, um, just because of the uncertainty of existing neighbors. Very good.
I'm fine with that. And then I also uh, mentioned the neighbors. I know a lot of the stores are open till like midnight or something. I'm anticipating nine or ten o'clock 'cause as I said, right now I have young children as well and I'm not gonna be out there till midnight, so.
Yeah, I, is it Toby or you can maybe answer, which parcel is it that is a rural uh, residential property in that on Tower Estate?
Two, two west and two, two lots to the east.
So we have quite a mix of uses in that area.
There is. It's a cluster, so.
Very good. Those are my biggest concern. You addressed the uh, time and then you addressed the um, the being able to park. Um, but I, I could show some support after testimony maybe of, if there was a sunset. Otherwise, I get real concerned about uh, allowing something this that.
No, like I said, if this is something that explodes and I'm seeing even twenty-five or fifty cars at a time.
Explodes, that's, I like that.
Thanks, Mike.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And if, if approved, would you be exercising this in seven days?
Uh, exactly, yeah. We, I mean, I already have my pallets of fireworks here, but there's more coming to sell, I guess, so. And then July first, Friday evening, everyone's welcome, so.
But just to clarify, you'd be okay with an added condition that uh?
Yeah, we could put a limit, like, I mean, five or ten years if that's acceptable to commission.
Like one and we come back.
Thinking two, one or two.
And we can revisit it.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that'd be, not that, not that it, not that we would reapprove it, but I have some of the same concerns Commissioner Poppins does is uh, uh, you know, that's a, it's a, it's your driveway, your everything is meant for residential.
Yep.
And what happens if hundred cars just start pulling off and you don't have room to put them in your place and they're parked out on the road and
Correct.
this and that. And I think those are things that, I'm not against what you're doing. And I totally get that you wanna dip your feet in the water first and see if it works before you go to some commercial type property. Um, but I think it would be good as protection for you as well. Um, maybe, you know, I could support it if we grant it for this year, see how it goes and then you, you know, there if, if, if it works good and you wanna come back next year and, and apply for it again, I think that would be okay. I guess that's, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
All right. Thank you very much.
Perfect.
All right. This time, I'll ask anybody in favor of the application come forward.
Terry Mark. I'm at four seven zero one four, Terry Lane, just down the street a little bit. Um, my wife and I are in favor of this, of course. It's our son-in-law. But uh, we're, we're very confident that uh, Kevin will do this the right way and will follow all the state and whatever guidelines he needs for safety and fireworks regulations and stuff. And he does have a nice approach there, coming in off the highway. And he's got room to park quite a few cars there, um, if he moves some of his cars. But anyway, uh, I uh, we're, we're in favor of you uh, granting this uh, you know, we, we see a young family trying to make a, a few extra bucks and Lord knows we could all use a few extra bucks at this time. So I, I urge you to, to uh, approve this uh, permit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in favor of the application? See you none. Anybody in opposition of the application? See you none. I'll close the floor to public input and I'll ask for motion from the commission.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to clarify something unfortunately. Um, the driveway that you appro- or the access to the road, is that a, an approved approach? Let's, let's get that on the record if that is or isn't.
Uh, yes, on the record, approximately ten or twelve years ago, somewhere around two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, somewhere in there. Uh, I went through the highway department here because it was off a state highway, so it was through the highway department, not the township. Um, and I did get it approved. Um, I also oversized and put in a concrete twenty-four inch culvert, which was above and beyond. Um, and so yes, I did have that approach approved several years ago.
And that's coming off of the approach?
That is off of the highway, Highway one ten, yep.
And can you pull up a map for that?
Because it's also Terry Lane.
Terry Lane.
Terry Lane, yep.
Right.
Yep. And then that, that one, um, it's a private road. Um, and then, yeah, I'm actually the guy who seems to just take care of Terry Lane. I plow it and bring in gravel and grade it as well, so.
But has there been an agreement coming off of?
Uh, I, I don't know that there's like an agreement. Um, it was, it's um, it's a private road, so I guess I'm not sure. It's just like our driveways to our houses and everything there. Um.
But the, the development or the Tower Estates?
Yep. There is no, it's unfortunate. Everything in that area has been dissolved. There's no road association. There's no nothing anymore out there. So as mentioned, I um, pay for a private grader to come down it myself. Um, I also plow the whole road in the winter. Um.
So do you, do you anticipate the bulk of your traffic coming off of?
I anticipate the.
The oil or will it be?
Yes, off of the oil.
I assume you'll have signs out.
The plan is I would put a temporary sign, yes, in the ditch. Um, and then, yeah, during the sales period and then have those removed. No permanent signage, just, just during the sales period, so. But, yeah, I guess.
Do you have to carry liability of any type insurance?
Correct, yep. Liability insurance on the building. Um, there's a lot of gray area on.
Speed limit there is fifty-five, correct?
Uh, yeah, it switches to fifty-five just kinda right back here. It's like thirty-five over the bridge and then switches to fifty-five somewhere just right back here, yep, so.
I mean.
So, which I know there was some discussion a few years ago decreasing that further down even just because of the traffic, 'cause we have a lot of truck traffic on this road right now that turns veery, the double H paving over there gets quite a few trucks every day. So there is a pretty busy highway right now, so.
All right. Thank you. So right now, we're at the point uh, looking for a motion with the amendments to the motion that you would like.
Did we ask if there was opposition?
Okay, I'm sorry.
What was that?
Did we ask if there was opposition to it?
Yeah, I believe uh, it was all sent out. There was no opposition, but Toby, can you clarify that?
Uh, tonight, no, and we've received no calls regarding this application.
So I'll make a motion. Um, I'll motion, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it with the amendments as listed, plus adding the amendment of needing to come back to have this reapproved in three years. Um, I, I think, I think one year, um, you know, I, I feel like there's, you know, like this has been an ongoing, like there, there's been things going on there. I, you know, coming back every year or requesting, you know, as a, as a tack, I, I my preference is three years, I guess, so.
Okay, we have a motion with three-year sunset on the temporary application.
Second, Johnson.
All right. Discussion or additional motions?
County's a unique county and we have to watch out for protection for all that are there now and those that are coming in the future. We're all support individuals trying to make the best of that opportunity that they may or may not have in front of them. Um, and again, I'm, I'm willing to give him a year or maybe two. One year may be too short because if he sees something that needs to be addressed, shutting him off before he had a chance to even try to rectify it would be too short. Three years already is to me, as fast as this area grows, is a stretch for me. Um, because people buy and sell homes month by month and we have no idea who his neighbor will be in, in thirty days. And um, this is kind of a stretch for a home occupied operation. Um, in an area that one house is ag, one house is uh, rural residential, and then we have commercial. I am willing to give two years, um, but three years would be a stretch for me. Um, and, and the concerns being that there's any issues with traffic that I, which I hope would be because he has great success, um, that he does find a commercial uh, venue for something like this, so.
Are you asking for amendment?
No, not at this time, yeah.
Okay.
I'm waiting for comments.
All right. Other discussion?
I would agree with Commissioner Poppins, I guess I, I was leaning more towards a year, I could probably go to two, just for the thought process, uh, as he brought up that, uh. Um, you know, there's gonna be some unforeseeable things come that you'd hate to just cut him off after one year maybe, but I, I do feel like this is a. This is a stretch for home occupancy, um, I don't, I. The fact that we don't have anything on our books tells us that this isn't anything that's real common. And every, all the fireworks that, uh, sales that I see are, are in more of a commercial type setting and so, um. I am gonna, I am gonna, I am gonna move, Mr. Chairman, to, uh. Uh, strike the, strike the, the three years out of the, out of the motion and, and uh, replace it with two.
All right, so you're, you're amending the motion?
I'm gonna amend it, yeah.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. All right, so. So at this time we have a motion, a second for a amendment for a two-year. Um, any discussion?
I would say there are some privately owned ones and they're not in probably Lincoln County, they're down by Beersford where they're, I think the Knights of Columbus has one, there is a private individual that has one and. They're a lot like what the applicant's describing, they're, um, mostly local people come in and out of there, you're. Probably not gonna wave a lot of people off the interstate, I guess, I would be. I would be in favor of just going with the three years, I guess, I don't, I, I don't think there's gonna be a lot of harm in this, there's lots of operations like this across the state that you see. And the state regulates it and it's nine days in and out and it's just part of the Fourth of July madness, I think, so.
I can tell you I drive that road every day, it's difficult even before any additional businesses is coming on and off that road. Um, I'm pretty confident the highway department, when approving that driveway was for a personal house, not a business type activity even for just nine days. Uh, there's no harm, it limited it to two years, it does not prevent them from coming back. So again, I'll still support, um, moving to a two-year versus three-year. But I do appreciate it that there was a limit added to it, so.
My, my concern's just slightly different than, I like, like the sunset clause, that's definitely awesome. Um, I think Kevin from our dealings with dealing with him and his family, everything in the past. Upstanding, good family and all that and always appreciate someone try to make a couple bucks and expand a future business. Uh, so my concern is in the past rezoning other properties around there, we've had a lot of questions about. Traffic, concerns about this and that and just a lot of concerns about additional growth there. So, and that's coming from everyone in the same neighborhood. So by allowing now a business to start, even though temporary, within the same neighborhood that had the covered, uh, concerns before. You know, I know it's nine days, but still there is a lot of concerns brought up in the past. So that's, that's where my, my thoughts are going is just the. Traffic, the people up and down the private roads, uh, that wasn't wanted in previous discussions.
Uh, I concur with all that, I like to give an opportunity to an individual from the area to try to make a go of it. Um, I think they can learn a lot in two years and, um, but same token, you're exactly right, we've, we've. Didn't rezone property in this vicinity because of traffic and things like that. Um, granted, this is just nine days, but it just takes one event, um, to really regret having something, uh, be approved that, uh. Um, maybe had not gone through the scrutiny, um, that it needed to, so.
All right, so additional conversation, questions? Commissioner Johnson?
No, we gotta vote on the amendment, right?
Yup, yup, I just had a deep thought on there, I didn't know.
Nope.
I didn't wanna go to a vote if you were still thinking.
So are we still on the amendment for the two-year?
Yup, so we'll vote on the amendment if that, everyone agrees with that and then we would vote on.
The main motion.
The main motion, which was amended to two years rather than three years. We're taking two votes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yup.
The first motion will be is if you change it from the three to two and if it fails, then it would still be the three, that passes then the main motion then be altered to two years.
Yup. So all right, this is, uh. This to approve the conditional use permit with a two-year.
No, no, you just vote on the.
We're just, we're just voting on the amendment.
Yes, yes, okay, so. Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yes.
I'll write this down quick, hold on. Uh, Commissioner Green?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote on yes also. So it's now been amended, the main motion amended to the two years. All right, any discussion on, now we're voting on the conditional use permit with a two-year sunset. Any additional discussion? All right. Um, so a conditional use permit, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
I'm, I'm still gonna vote no just from the past, past. So with that, uh, conditional use permit is granted, correct, congratulations. I, I hope to see all kinds of cars there reacting neat and orderly and buying all kinds of stuff from you.
Thank you.
So again, I wanna go off for the public, conditional use permits can be appealed. With a letter to Toby within five business days. All right, Mr. Brown?
Okay, this last item, application, uh, the fourth item is the last item, uh, is application for a conditional use permit or transfer one billing eligibility. Um, subject, uh, or the property, property owner of both parcels is, uh, John and, uh, John Keogh Senior. Um, this, uh, property is located approximately, uh, one and a half miles southeast of the city of Harrisburg. Um, the two parcels, uh, in consideration, the north parcel is shown here is approximately seventy-five or eight, seventy-six acres in size. The receiving parcel is approximately thirty-five acres in size. Uh, the receiving parcel, um, is, doesn't have any, uh, structures on it. But there was a building eligibility, it was placed, as you can see, just to the south here, that does have a single family dwelling on it. And then there's a parcel directly to the south of that that also does have a single family dwelling on it. Um, the applicant did submit a site plan with the application, identifies that the track would be identified right here. Uh, this would be, um, this is South Dakota Highway eleven, which would be just to the west of it. This off to the, what I'll say to the south and to the east was that building eligibility placement that I talked about before. Uh, so this, uh, um, property would be utilizing the same driveway that's been permitted by the state, um, to access onto the property. So staff did review the application with the ordinance, um, and did identify, uh, that this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, primarily because of the conditions that are established within the zoning ordinance as far as, um, requirements or standards that, that be contiguous and under the same ownership. Um, we did also look at the, at the fact that there is a criteria for, um, what I'll call agricultural productivity of the area. Uh, this would take it away from a parcel directly to the north, which is really unencumbered is my word to say from having additional residential structures there. Would place it in a, in a, in a location that would not be conflicting with agricultural type production on the property. Uh, so staff does identify that, again, this application is consistent with your comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance. And if approved, would recommend the five conditions that were included in the staff report. Now with that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, commissioners, you go, do we have any questions for staff?
Can you just give us the rundown, Toby, um, of the, uh. Of the existing housing LG, I guess just give us the countdown, how you came to your number that they still have one or two or whatever they have.
Uh, just based on the fact that this was a lot of record, um, and so there was, there is zero remaining in the parent parcel now. Um, there was in this property, there was available two eligibilities that were placed now, currently there would be none left there. And so this would remove that one there, there will be no remaining in the parent, in the, in the sending parcel.
Because, a, and the two to the north were a lot of record.
Correct.
Both of them were.
Correct.
But then, so was there two that came with that parcel when they bought it?
Um.
What I would call the. Eighty or whatever?
Seventy-five, no, it would've been one.
There was just one?
There's one, yeah. And that'll be moved.
And then do they, they also own the property to the east, I believe?
Uh, yes, I believe.
So they would have eligibilities there?
Uh, I don't know on that one.
Okay.
I don't recall that one, no. The most I do know is, uh, the, so I believe that they're placing it for a son, um, would be this one, and then their other son is the one that built. With the placement of the eligibility directly adjacent to that one. But beyond that, I, I don't know, I haven't looked at their ownership or what eligibilities they have left in that area.
And I think you, you brought it up, but basically this, all these eligibilities are gonna s, share the same driveway?
Uh, these, this one and the placement of the, of his brother will, this other one to the south, they have their own existing driveway going on to the state highway, if I'm correct on that one.
I don't know that they do have, uh.
I'll have to look once if they do.
I guess what's your concern or do you have any concern about? Um, have multiple eligibilities with, uh, just one driveway?
No, no concerns, no.
About who owns the driveway or who's responsible for it, I mean.
No.
Do we have anything that puts the burden of responsibility on any one of those owners to maintain it, or how does that typically work?
It's a civil matter, usually an easement.
Yeah.
Yup.
We're not approving the plat, we're just approving the move of the eligibility, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and I.
But I don't, we wouldn't approve the plat, if we transferred, it's a permitted process, so it wouldn't come back in front of us.
They'd have to have, to have that other plat, they'd have to have access somehow, so, but.
Well, that's why I'm curious if, I mean, when it goes through the permitted process, what do you, what do you guys think, I mean, what do you, what's your requirements, I guess, for access?
Uh, that's our requirement, it's in Harrisburg's jurisdiction. So we, we don't review or approve that plat.
Oh, you don't?
No. It does, I do, and I do apologize, cause we didn't, we didn't plat this or anything, but it does look like that neighbor to the south. This is John Keogh Junior would be this property here, this is a, a separate owner, it does look like they do access that. That singular driveway that the state permitted, yeah.
I just drove by there yesterday and that's what it looks like to me.
Both of those structures are, 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 you know, uh, large, or small house with big garages, so.
All right, additional questions for staff?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, with that, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and. Uh, talk about the building eligibility transfer.
Hello, my name is John Keogh Senior, I live at thirty-nine, ten, Green Castle Avenue Southwest in Oxford, Iowa. But I own these three parcels here, um, this is my younger son Christopher and his wife Amanda, they want to move. Across from my older son, um, the two, two boys are going to be farming the hundred and seventy acres, we'll split it between them. And we'd like to have them beside each other so the grandkids don't have to drive up and down the road from that north parcel. That's the basic reason for this whole thing. The houses look big because they're shouses, they've got a, a farm shop built into the house, both of them. And that's what Christopher and Amanda plan to build as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions for the application? All right, thank you. All right, anybody in favor of the application, please come forward and speak?
Uh, Chris Keogh, three sixteen East Willow, sorry, just moved to an apartment, why, um, so. Um, I'm for it, I am currently farming sixty acres for the last year and then, um, eighty-five behalf with my brother, cause my dad's stepping out, so. Currently active than that, it'd be nice to be actually on the property when farming, just because of stuff happening and, uh, just make sure that it's okay and. As my dad mentioned, it'd be nice not to have to have the grandkids, um, you know, my kids actually go up Highway eleven to see each other, so. Uh, that's all I have.
Amanda Keogh, three sixteen East Willow Street, I also came to support this, just, uh, pretty much what everyone stated, would like to get out, um, and be on the farm, I grew up on a ten-acre homestead, so. Would really love to get back out there.
I do have a question, you really wanna move that close to your brothers and?
We only live four houses apart now, so we're kinda used to it, until we moved, yup.
All right, that was my only question, anybody else? All right, thank you. All right.
Any opposition?
Anybody else in favor of the application? See you none, now will I ask anybody in opposition of the application? See you none, I'll close the Florida public comment and ask for a motion.
I'll move to, to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to approve, second, any further discussion? So none, outdo roll call. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Enstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jungling is also a yes. Congratulations, good luck. Shouses are awesome too, by the way. Uh, we do have yet to talk about. Uh, discussion on building eligibility transfers.
Deal with the plumbing issue. Good luck with that.
Have fun with that. See you like. I don't know which I prefer at this point. All right, uh, Mr. Brown, new business, uh, work session discussing building eligibility transfers. I believe our homework was to bring forward ideas to this meeting. And let's discuss, uh, amendments to building transfer eligibility or, or not. Any, any changes, amendments, thoughts? I don't know if there's anything for you, Mr. Brown, feel free.
Um, yeah, so we talked about it last month, um, this goes back about three months or three past meetings. The last two meetings, we did open it up for public comment, we did send letters, the first time a little bit late, but the second time thirty days prior to the meeting, uh, to the townships. I think if anything, it's, it's created some good dialogue between staff and the townships. You know, we've really identified that, you know, um, Lincoln County, we were in the same boat as most of our townships were in about three years ago. When we, if, prior to adopting the, the master transportation plan, we didn't have a framework or guidance or standards. And I think our, our highway department has that now in place. Um, and I think through that discussion, I think you saw part of that dialogue tonight with, um, the rezone application for LG Everest, a lot of that. Things that we've been talking about kinda came to fruition and really it was the township taking the lead on that and working with the. With the applicant to make sure that they, they all had their, um, their, their agreement, I, I guess in place prior to, but. Um, I guess at this stage, you know, that, uh, I, I see issues, um, with, with transfer eligibility, I see issues with eligibilities. But I don't see the problem yet that we know that if we fix this, it's gonna fix all of it, I guess in my mind as staff. Um, I think the biggest thing we're seeing is they're being utilized, I don't necessarily know if the transfer's the huge issue. Um, but they're definitely being utilized all over the county, I mean, we've, we've had a, a great number of. Placement and building and those different types of things and good things, but there's growing pains and issues that are there. What I would say to you is, is that I did request and, and the budget for the planning and zoning department to update the comprehensive plan. And that discussion starts tomorrow with our Board of Commissioners for the budget, uh, discussion. And I hope that through that process, we can take a more, a larger approach, look at all the issues that we might have out there, um, and take a look at it, so. You know, other than some guidance from, um, from the board is. So, you know, other than some guidance from, um, from the board is, I don't really have anything to tell you, uh, what we're at now. I, I did find was interesting is someone mentioned it to me the other day is, you know, we've only had density zoning in Lincoln County since nineteen ninety-five. I mean, it's pretty relatively new, a, a huge change in nineteen ninety-five, because prior to that, you just had to have an acre and we would come into our office, we'd give you a building permit. And so they asked, well, was there controversy or was there a concern at that time? And when I look back in the minutes, there was really nothing. And, and partly of that is, did people know, you know, what was going on or not? But, but it's been fascinating to, to me to sit through and listen to a lot of the issues coming up about how, you know, we would be taking away something from somebody and those different types of things. And you think back to when, when it was created and what the issues were, but, and I think, um, you know, the other thing I think is, is staff's doing a good job as far as, I, I know Commissioner Scott, um, asked it a lot and those different types of things, but, uh, we, we do have a database that we didn't have before that we're tracking these eligibility's. It's at least once a day that somebody's contacting our office to determine if they have a building eligibility, because they are valuable now. I mean, within the last two years, they, they weren't, but, um, so I think we have a, a database that goes back, it's not just recently, it goes back a number of years. But there is some complexities towards building eligibility's, um, primarily because of, of, um, the, the point of time when we said they could be lots of record. You know, if they were plotted before that date nineteen ninety-five. So I know we, a lot of people say, well, there's already three houses there, how can they have another one left? Well, that's just how the, how the ordinance works and that part of it. So I wish that part was cleaner, uh, it would help, uh, with explanation, with people being able to understand it, but. It's, it's just where the ordinance is at this time, so. But with that, I guess I don't have any guidance for you at this time. I hope that through the comprehensive plan, uh, um, update process, that some of these issues that we could find out, solutions to some of them and things like that, but. That's the best, and I guess I'd like to leave it up to you guys to talk about too, so.
So at this point, it, uh, be up to us as a commission to recommend changes or not. And then ask, um, the, Mr. Brown and staff to, uh, formulate them with the big fancy words and lawyer talk to, uh, to, to do that. Uh, myself personally, I, I thought a lot about this and we've gone through a lot of, of rezones and not rezones, uh, moving and all that stuff in the last few months and I'm actually just fine leaving the way it is. I would, I really super strongly encourage townships to permit, uh, do an application process or set guidelines for driveways. Uh, I think that's, seems to be the number one thing we keep coming back with is the townships. Um, as far as transferring eligibility's from township to township. Me personally, I don't see that as, I, I understand the financial impact, but also if you're citizen A living in township A, to go anywhere, you have to drive through township B. So then you're using that road, so if your taxes are in township A or township B, you're still using the road. So that's, that's how I see that one.
But.
So can you, so tomorrow, you said that, you know, initiating the process, so has, has the funding already been secured for whatever this next step is for the comprehensive plan? Whether it's to, um, hire somebody to assist in rewriting it, or where do we sit in that process, Toby? I was a little confused by that.
Yeah, so tomorrow is the first, is the first, um, agenda for the Board of Commissioners to review. Our department had submittals as far as the budget request. And so what I've.
What's that amount?
Um, I, I budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand this year, so it's, it'll be, it'll be a two-year process though, so it'll be a hundred and fifty then next year too, so. And I base that on, we're currently working with Sioux Falls and Harrisburg and the county on a, what I'll call a corridor study of the nine miles of, of Highway one oh six. And that, that we're budgeting a hundred and fifty thousand, so I'm, I'm a little low, but I'm, you know, I'm being conservative as far as what we can do with it. But based on the things that we've been dealing with over the last, I'll say six months and a year and two years is, I think it's critical that we start adopting it or start reviewing it and take a look at it, updating it.
You know, I, I think based on when it was written last time, you know, the, the exponential growth that we've had in Lincoln County has been, you know, and I don't know, you know, it obviously wasn't forecasted at this level, um, so to be able to, you know, go back and look at the plan to make sure it's still conducive of, of the growth that we're seeing. I think is important, you know, tonight, this last one that we saw with the density zoning, putting the housing eligibility's all together in that one spot, you know. You know, to me, I think that, that's what we look for, you know, specifically even right on, you know, Highway eleven on, 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 you know, State Oil Road, right? You know, so I don't know if us as, as this board, you know, if we make the recommendation, you know, if our recommendation is to support Toby, um, you know, to go forward with supporting Toby and, you know, with his budget request, to be able to look at the comprehensive plan over the next two years. Um, you know, I'm definitely in support of that, um, and, and I think it is in support of, you know, the, the great work that, that staff is currently doing, so.
What I think too, you know, like getting those townships involved, that should be part of, you know, transferring, building eligibility's, but when it comes time to build, that that's part of the application package that they have to provide that, or they already have to provide that saying, hey, here's approval from the township before we even think about the subdevelopment plan.
So just to, I don't know if this will answer, but my, so I've got three thoughts on this since we've been talking about it, and one of them is the township. And as we've, as we've continued to have discussion, what, what, I guess what I've heard is, is that it's so different from one end of the county to the other, from one township to the other, that I don't know that on the county level that we can just, just say, well, let's do this and that'll fix everything, or let's do this, this and this, and that'll fix everything. But what we have found out is, as we've had this dialogue, um, is that the township has a lot more levers than they're using right now. And, and if they're, if, if they want to, and, and I know our township is gonna, is gonna implement a driveway permitting process. And we're, we're actually even gonna, gonna look at limiting, you know, potentially limiting the amount of residential driveways in a mile and some things like that. And so they have that, and then what we wanna do is, once we get that in place, I think if we present that material to Toby's office and say, okay, if somebody wants to build a, uh, comes in and, uh, applies for a building eligibility in Highland Township, and Toby knows that these are the requirements that we're gonna ask, he can hopefully pass that information on to him, even though it's maybe not a requirement of his building permit. But I think if he just says, well, this is who you gotta talk to and this is what you gotta do before you guys go about this, cause.
Is that something that he could include in his comprehensive plan to be able to, whoever they hire as a consultant to, you know, do some work with these townships to kinda get common understanding of, hey, here's what the permitting process looks like, here's kinda what it should be?
Well, and there again, I think that's where the, the separation between county and townships are, and I think the townships have to take that upon themselves, depending upon how important they feel about it, or how, how, how much it influences their townships, right?
But I'm just saying if they could, you know, give some of that funding, so the township does come and say, hey, we wanna do a study to figure out how many of these per mile we can have. Then Toby would have some money available to say, hey, here's, you know, what are you doing in a comprehensive plan anyways, here's some money to help.
Would be interesting to have that part of it, I mean, you know, because we've, we've thrown out some, even though it doesn't, we, we've thrown out some, some interesting scenarios where you could have thirty driveways on a half a mile of township road and, um, but is that for the county to decide, or i- is that for the road authority? And the road authority is the township. And this, you know, Supreme Court has, has backed that many a times, that they're the road authority and what they think is right is right. And, and, and that could be different, um, you know, you talk, I've talked to the township supervisors in the Valley Township and their idea of traffic is way different than ours is in Highland Township, you know, so, um, and they're gonna, they've got this new process now where they're gonna start doing what they're talking about, LG Everest was talking about re, redoing these roads. And I've talked to some of the county highway guys and they say, once you spend that money, it's done, you know, so that changes things too now, you know? If you've got, if you've got a lot of traffic, a lot of driveways and you're willing to, you know. So, so I, I guess my point is, I think, I think that, that, at least my opinion, as being both a township supervisor and on this board is, is that, um, I, I think the more local we handle it, uh, is probably gonna be the best. Um, at least it is in our township, and I think that we're just gonna handle it on a local basis. Um, and then that, that leaves the freedom for everybody else in the county to do it how they want. Um, that's my thought on that. The, the comprehensive plan, we a thousand percent need to do something there. Um, I've been frustrated as a planning commission member, is we've been using that as a guide, cause that's our only guide on how to approve things. And the, the county Board of Commissioners has decided that, as I've watched their meetings, they've decided the comprehensive plan in a lot of cases is outdated, and so they just kinda doing their own thing with, uh, this is my own opinion, without very much structure or, or consistency. And so I think just the fact that we get an updated comprehensive plan that everybody can use as a guide would make our jobs a lot easier, because we're sitting here as a planning commission and we're using that as a guide and we're making decisions on that. And then it's getting appealed and going to the county commission, and then they're setting precedence for us, that, well, that really doesn't matter. Well, I, I'm confused about it as a planning commission member, and I would like to see the updated plan, that everybody's like, okay, this is the current plan, let's follow it, right? And as far as the eligibility thing goes in our comprehensive plan, um, and we had, uh, Daisy from Turner County, she, uh, she confirmed it, that our comprehensive plan, when it comes to transfer of housing eligibility's and density in the country, actually says two things that are polar opposite. I- if you read it, it says that it's good to do it, but yet it's not. And so, um, I think just from the eligibility standpoint, I think that would, we could clear that up a lot, right? So I guess those are kinda, those are kinda my thoughts on it, um, and again, I, I, I've, I've been pretty boisterous about wanting to, you know, how this looks, and I do think it's something that, I, I'd be interested to see what, what a comprehensive plan with the growth that we're having, at the pace that we're having, what different it's gonna say, I guess, than the one that we have right now. And so I would a hundred percent support you, Toby, and your office and your staff, and I would encourage the county commissioners, if they're listening, to approve the funding, um, because I think it's something that we need as a county to go forward with is a updated comprehensive plan.
I thousand percent agree with all that, that the guidance, so updated plan would help us a lot. Right now, our goal is to grow cities outward, you know, and not create separate islands all over the county. And this, um, comprehensive plan will definitely help that.
I think, I think, yeah, I, I don't, you know, one is, I guess, the, the, the vision I have with, with doing a consultant is it's kinda like a kid at the state fair with a balloon, is just let it go. I mean, we just, you know, I don't, I don't wanna micromanage. I, I think this needs to be a bottom-up plan. And I think that's part of the problem with the current plan is it's not, you know, it was a top-down plan. And I think that the other part about it is, is that I tend to think is, going through with a consultant, part of it is, it's a lot of educational too. You know, people get tired of me saying the same thing over and over again, but then outside consultant telling us, it's like, hey, if we develop, keep developing this way, this is the consequences, this is what's gonna happen down the road. Um, and, and part of the consequence is, is what it's already stated in the current comprehensive plan, is that we don't wanna put an undue burden on our agricultural community, you know, with growth and with development and those types of things, so that's kinda some of those things, so. So I'm excited. I, I think the board's supportive of it too. Of course, funding is a huge issue in Lincoln County as far as available funds and, and needs that the county has. So I, I don't want it to see that the, the board's not looking at, you know, if, whatever the board decides to do, it's not that they don't see the importance of it. It's just they have to balance the needs of funding for, for the entire county, and there's, there's many things that are issues in Lincoln County currently now, but I think they recognize as well too, that it needs to be updated.
And, and hopefully, a- and even if they don't approve, you know, I mean, uh, 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 approve that, I would, I would encourage them, um, and I wish Commissioner Poppins was still here, so I could, he could take the message to him. But I would encourage them to find some kinda guideline that they can go with on these, on these issues. Because currently, it doesn't, when I, it doesn't appear to me that there's consistency. And so I would like to see some consistency and some guidelines, and then, you know, we had our group meeting, uh, we had this whole discussion. Uh, we had the opportunity to have it, and I was disappointed that, uh, there was very little dialogue, and, and we weren't given a lot of, um, guidance on what they would like to see too, you know, and I realize we're, we're on our own board, but I think in, in conjunction, I think it'd, it'd be nice if we had a point, you know, if we had a, if we had a beacon that we're all pointing towards and everybody's, you know, we're going towards the same direction, cause it just, to me, doesn't feel that way right now.
And I think we have created our own direction as a planning board. I mean, you know, when I first started on this board, I don't know how many, it wasn't that long ago, I don't think, but it was inconsistent. And now we've slowly grown into consistently, you know, saying no to bigger developments. Um, kinda forgetting about precedents, because what happened in the past, different doors, different people. What we gotta look forward to is going in the future. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm excited to see what comes out of this.
Yeah.
Uh, housing eligibility's though, are we, do we wanna just kinda see where the comprehensive?
I, I guess my, my personal opinion would be is, is, uh, I think it would be premature to do anything until we see what a new comprehensive plan would look like. And in the meantime, I think that the townships can take care of, um, some of the issue, the issues that we have discussed over the, over the past two, um, public hearings, I think that if the townships want to, they have the levers to, to be able to take care of some of that stuff on their own currently.
And I, I think internally, I think we're, you know, we're, we're holding tight more to that we need some type of a written or verbal or from the townships. And that, that kinda was, you know, wasn't consistent with that part of it, but, and, you know, and, and hopefully the townships know too, is, is that, you know, we, some of this, there's a lot of stuff going on right now, I mean, as far as development. And, and there isn't a lot of, a lot of lead time given to us, you know, a lot of, you know, people coming in and they've already bought land and they've already built architectural plans and they're ready to go, and we're like, well, but there's process and stuff that needs to go through with that. But it's, it's a different place right now, um, as far as that stuff, there's stuff happening, you know, even before they consult with us. I mean, we've, we've had more this year than I've seen in the past, where people just started building before we've had any approval or anything. So I mean, it's, there, there's things out there that, that we're going through, that we need to work through, so, but. But I, I concur with what Commissioner Scott said on the, just wait till we get the comprehensive plan updated.
All right, any other discussion, Commissioners, or Toby, anything to, to add?
Well, I did, I did put a second item on the agenda as far as just updates, and I think Commissioner Scott alluded to some of that, is that, um, uh, prior to the, or in between your last meeting and this meeting, uh, there was three items that the Board of Commissioners did, um, take up in consideration. Uh, the first was the rezone of the Meadows, um, uh, development, which is a housing development, approximately thirty lots. This would just be to the east or to the west, sorry, of, uh, Spring Creek Golf Course. And so the Planning Commission did recommend an aisle of that application, but that application for rezone to real residential was approved by the Board of Commissioners. And then also at that same meeting, they did approve, uh, the subdivision plan, uh, for that development. And so there is some discussion that I'm having with the State's Attorney's Office about how we're gonna proceed with, if you recall, you, uh, this board did deny uh, that sub, or that preliminary subdivision plan, so I'm in discussion with them about process that we'll go through with that. Um, and so just figure out how we're gonna proceed with that, and I'll keep you informed of that, but I don't have a direct answer on how we're gonna do that.
In general, that subdivision plan should come through us first, is that correct, if I remember it right?
It, it does, but it's, you know, the subdivision ordinance is conflicting language. It does have your signature block on the preliminary subdivision plan, but then in the text part of it, it says that yours is a recommendation given to the Board of Commissioners. Um, so we just wanna make sure that, that we follow those steps, uh, procedurally correct. Um, cause if you're aware, is that the preliminary plan is approved by, you know, essentially approved or recommended by the Planning Commission, approved by the Board of Commissioners, but that's just essentially conceptual lot block layout. The final grading, the final drainage, the final, uh, what I'll call the, the construction plans part of it, that's internal by me, just by staff. And so there is quite a bit of concern of the neighbors in that area about drainage and about access and about roads, connections and things like that, that we need to go through. Um, the, the homeowners group in this development, also, the Board of Commissioners approved at their last meeting, a vacation of this connection to Metal Arc Street as well. Um, so that, they vacated a portion to it, so there's still some discussion about connectivity and things like that through that development, so we'll get to that part. Also at that same meeting, uh, um, the board did, um, they had tabled, but they took up for consideration the appeal of your approval of the board did, they had tabled, but they took up for consideration the appeal of your approval of the Primo Feet Lot, which is just to the south on Highway eleven. And so if you recall, goes back a couple of years, but they were limited to a thousand head on the property. They came back before you to request an amendment to that to go to two thousand head. The planning commission did approve that. It was appealed to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners upheld that decision. They did, I believe, upheld it and amended a condition on it. But I think it was two conditions that they amended onto it and and so, but that was upheld and and some, so. But those were the last, those were the three main actions that were done before then and the previous meeting, so. One other thing that I wanted to kind of talk to you about beyond that, if there's any questions on that stuff, I'll certainly entertain that. But the other thing that I wanted to to point out to you is if you've noticed, I've been referencing in the staff reports some some different chapter numbers and section numbers for the ordinances. It doesn't exactly coincide with what we gave you in the binder. And so this was a major project that the county undertook, was to codify all of the county ordinances. And so, and I'm going to show you where that's at here once, but. So the the Otter's Office really took the lead on this, but essentially they they took all of their ordinances that have been adopted by the Board of Commissioners, and this is just on the county website. And so American Legal Publishing, they're a pretty well-known company. They've codified the cities Sioux Falls and and different organizations like that. But this is essentially all of the ordinances that have been adopted by the by the county essentially. And so all of our ordinances are land usage. And there was an issue with they didn't have all of the joint zoning ordinances codified in here. So I didn't, I I didn't really go through this process with you guys yet. But we're still trying to figure out internally how we're going to give you this, you know, because it's a printout and things like that or if you just reference it on here. But so this, these, this is a codification of all the current ordinances. And so the previous version that we gave you is a codification of it, but that's internal codification. This will be the official codification of the ordinances. So we'll always reference it as the Lincoln County Code of Ordinances. And we'll reference, it's, it's the chapter one fifty-four zoning, chapter one fifty-five is the joint zoning. And then everything underneath it, it used to be chapters, it's really kind of sections now. But they didn't change anything, they just took what was currently adopted by the county and just put it into this codification format. So this, this will be what we're referencing from here on out. And just for reference, if you want to look through it, the planning and zoning statute is the majority of the ordinances that have been adopted by the county. There's really nothing much else as far as general standards or ordinances that are a part of it, so. And then one other quick thing, I guess, so that's that and we'll kind of go through that in the future and that. But the parcel browser has also been updated. And so that's our GAS administrator that that's that administers the the parcel browser map. So if you look at some of the layers and things like that, we've, they've simplified it as far as flood areas and and planning areas and things like that. And then we've also, the county got completely reflowing on, I think, I believe it was April of this year. So the current aerial that you're looking at is a few months old. And so we typically do new flies every two years in the county, but this essentially is within the last few months, so. With that, that's really all I had, I guess, if you have any other questions for staff at this time, I could certainly.
All I gotta say is that's awesome, Toby. Those updates, even the ordinances together, that's, it's not fun, it's not flashy, but it's needed. And that, and I know it's a lot of work and that's awesome for you and staff, I appreciate everybody.
Yeah, and I I appreciate the Otter's Office taking the lead on the commissioners. It was, it was an investment in the county. But, you know, when I first started here, when I first started here, I was concerned that how does anyone know what the rules are? I mean, there's really no, we had, if anyone remembers, we had an ordinance page that just had lists of ordinances. But this is a full codification of all of the ordinances in the county. So it helps us in referencing people when they have questions too, and you can just hyperlink everything. And it's more you, but I'd say it's more user-friendly than I think we've had anything in the past. But so it was a team effort and and I think it's a good thing and it's, sometimes those little things get overlooked, but that's a big thing for, in my mind, for the citizens of the county, so. With that, I think that's the last item on the agenda. Otherwise, we do have three applications for next month. We won't have a joint, I don't believe we have any joint applications at that time, so. Thank you.
All right, all I want to say for the record, this is being recorded. So any zones, rezones can appeal to the Board of Commissioners. I I'm trying to say that after everyone, but sometimes I forget, so. And then conditioning use can be repealed also. So if you have any issues, just call Toby with, if you want to ask questions, let us know.
Yeah, the only thing I clarify there is the the rezones isn't an appeal, it's just a recommendation from your board. So it's just the the commissioners just take your recommendation and their guidance or guidance.
Or or don't.
Well, I think they do, I mean, I think they do. It's it's challenging, you know, and things like that. But so there's a lot of, you know, it's, it's a lot of issues and there's a lot of concerns and a lot of things and.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
Motion to adjourn? No, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody.